Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and thank you for the opportunity that we have been given to do the city's business. We pray for each member of the council here tonight, and our mayor, and our city staff. We thank you for the many blessings that you've brought to our city, and we pray that tonight you would be with us as we look at the business of the city and make decisions. We pray that you would give us your wisdom and guidance, and bless us as we do this work tonight. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, Tuesday, September 8, 2020, and I will call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Tonight, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good evening.
Good evening, Your Honor members. Thank you. Just a few changes this evening. Under public hearings, item C, the 608 Ann Street, that public hearing should be removed from the agenda this evening.
Which one?
C. It's the tax rebate for 608 Ann Street. And then, on the consent agenda, item number three, which is the fee schedule, we are going to move that item to the next committee of the whole meeting. We feel like it warrants more discussion, and there's several questions that came across after the packet went out. We'd be glad to address those in that setting rather than tonight.
Thank you, Andrew. And with that, I would entertain-
Your Honor, I can do it later, but I wonder if it's possible to pull items five and six off the consent agenda?
Sure. Yep, certainly. And we'll do that when we get to the item G.
Sorry, no.
No, no, no problem.
Six and seven, sorry.
Six and seven. All right. So for now, looking for a motion to accept the amended agenda.
I'll make that.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Justin, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. A motion carries. Under public hearings, tonight, we'll have two public hearings. First public hearing will be for the housing tax rebate at 1703, 1705, 1707, and 1709 South Cascade Street. Anyone, and that's for the housing tax rebate. Clara, do you have, would you like to introduce this item, or do you have anything to add before we open the public hearing?
I will just add, good evening, council, that these are, these are housing units that are being built in the same Prairie View Development addition that the Rogness family has been working on for the past several months. So these are, again, townhome units. They will not be rentals at any point during their existence. They will be sold.
Great. Thank you, Clara. And with that, we will open the public hearing, and we're wishing to speak to the issue. Step to the lectern and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close that public hearing, and we would look for a resolution to approve that housing tax rebate for 1703, 1705, 1707, and 1709 South Cascade Street.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Caroline, any discussion? Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 No.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinkford.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Hopper.
That resolution is approved. Next, we will have a public hearing for the property parcel located in Section 13 Township 132, Range 43, Rawling Meadows, Lot 1, Block, I'm sorry, Lot 2 of Block 1, Rawlins Beach Trail. With that, we will open, did you have anything to add on this one, Clara?
This is another townhome as part of the rebate program.
Thank you, Clara. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the issue, step to the lectern, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It's back to the council.
I will offer it directly behind my place.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Jim, someone like to second that resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Scott, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Hopper.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no bids to award this evening under petitions and communications. Tonight, Lorna Fugelsten from the Food Shelf, Community Food Shelf, is here to give us a few remarks. So with that, welcome, Lorna, and please feel free to step to the lectern and address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here to basically thank the city of Fergus Falls for stepping up and did what, excuse me, did what they did to help the Food Shelf along. People, at the time when we decided to close it, it was just for the safety of our volunteers, which were in our age bracket, somewhere in between 70 and 80 years old. We did not think of the opposite side, that the community could be hurt by this. And that's when we're approached and got together with the city and, of course, worked real hard with Clara, the mayor. I cannot express the gratitude I have, and also the board has, for all the hard work the city has done for us. You can't put it down on paper. I know it's an important thing in this, and next time, if we ever come across this again, we will look at something like that. Or we will come to the city, I will personally come to the city myself, on behalf, also the Rotary Club, Federated, and every, are you guys kidding? My cell phone's ringing.
I did too, don't worry about it.
You like my celery?
Seriously.
Okay. I got it wrong there. Sorry. That topped it off, right there. I can honestly say that topped it off. Anyhow, I cannot express the gratitude we have as a board for every citizen that you guys helped along. Okay? I know that the city employees were more than dedicated in this voucher to try to help us to keep the step, keep going in a bad situation. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Lorna.
No, there's no need to thank me. I believe you guys are the ones that did it.
Well, I know, I will just say this, to the city staff that helped Clara, the librarians that organized-
Oh, definitely.
Like you mentioned, the Rotary Federated Church. It was a community effort.
Yeah.
We were glad, there was a lot of uncertainty at that time. I know that there was a lot of people within the Food Shelf who didn't, weren't trying to hurt the community. It was an opportunity for the city to step up and form partnerships. I think that's what this community is about. And so, anyway, we're glad for the opportunity to help.
I want to, I want to thank everybody, and I hope as a Food Shelf board member, if there's something we can do, any help with the city and projects like they've helped us.
Well, I think-
And you have my phone number.
Yes, I do.
Be careful what you ask though.
But I will say this, Lorna, I think it's an opportunity, I think to city staff, to Andrew and your entire staff, I mean, Andrew was instrumental in this as well. I think city staff often hear when there's problems, and they don't often hear a thank you when they do something right. So I think to city staff, I'd say thanks for that. Thanks, Lorna.
Thank you, guys, and I hope we, you know, if anybody's got any questions, I'm more than willing to answer anything. But thank you so much. We kept a small portion of our community going, and it helps all the way through.
And Lorna, I will just say thank you for all the hard work, because you put in a lot of hard work over the years, you and the board. So thank you very much.
Well, it's not just me, it's the community. Yeah. I'd like to pat myself on the back, but my phone will probably go off.
Thanks, Lorna.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great night.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
It was five and six. Sorry, five and six.
Five and six. Got it. Okay. It is five and six. On the original agenda, correct?
Yeah.
All right. So under the consent agenda, we'll move along. Anthony has requested items five and six be removed for individual discussion. It would like anyone to have any other items that they would like to discuss? If not, I would entertain a resolution approving the other five items, I guess it would be?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Do you want to say that? Thank you, Brent. Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
Pinkford.
Yes.
Flomie.
Yes.
Hopper.
That resolution is approved. Item five is the resolution approving a conditional use permit to split duplexes into individual lots in an R2 zone located at 1821, 1823, 1825, and 1827 Cascade Street South, as requested by Donovan Rogness of Prairie View Development.
And my question came from a resident that lives in that area that was concerned about, obviously, this development taking place. Now, there's multiple houses going along there, and the houses have a very short forecourt, and they're concerned about snow removal and also runoff, and are the, is the drainage system up there, you know, adequate to take the additional kind of water that's going to be dispelled from impervious surface of those houses? And I'm not sure which, I suppose it would be Brian's engineering, but is there any provisions at all on stormwater prevention for these houses? I mean, it seems a fairly genuine concern, and I don't know whether we've really addressed it ever.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks. That would be a Brian question, but I will say this, new construction can't push their problems onto other existing constructions. So I'm confident Brian would have looked at the ability for the stormwater system to handle that on these lots. And when they go beyond these lots to the larger development, and they have plats and those types of things that'll go along with it, there's going to be a deeper dive into that as well. So I think it's a valid question, and I think we hear from folks when there's changes in neighborhoods a lot in regards to those types of things, but we can't add problems for something that's existing by building new construction. So I'm confident that that would have been addressed, and we'll have Brian follow up to make sure that that is, in fact, the case. But if there's problems, it's certainly going to be the responsibility of the folks that are building new construction to take care of that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And with-
And I guess, I'd like to add one thing. When we built our twins homes there, they had to build a pond behind us. So I'm sure that they've looked at that. That's one of the things that they have to do when they put it all together.
And, and when, thank you, Your Honor, Councilmember Fish, when we talked with the developer at the beginning of this project and looked at the entire development, there are ponds that would be part, there's existing wetlands that may be able to be utilized. Otherwise, there would be pond requirements as part of the overall development. So there has been some consideration given to stormwater. Now, I, you know, these specific lots that are fronting Cascade, I can't say what extent there's been done, but there has been a global conversation about stormwater and what that looks like.
Thanks. Thank you.
Someone like to offer that resolution approving that conditional use permit?
I'll offer that.
I'll second.
Second, Krista. Thank you, Jim. Krista, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number six is the resolution approving a preliminary and final plat to create one-lot subdivision called Dunham's Edition for the property located 2001 West Lincoln Avenue, as requested by the Westridge Mall Limited Partnership. Anthony?
Yeah, I mean, my question on this was, obviously, Westridge Mall is sliced out a piece, the cinema, rather, is sliced out a piece of this, and there's access on to, you know, that back road. Is this parcel looking to do the same so that they technically, I mean, it reads that there's an easement to allow traffic to obviously go around the building, but are they also looking for some access from the road to the south on this?
Andrew, do you want to-
I mean, before, you know, granting something that, you know, potentially is just based on easements, if I was Dunham's, I wouldn't want to buy something like that, you know?
Absolutely. I am not aware of any requests that they've made as part of that plating process to access Western Avenue from the south. My understanding is their intent would be to continue to utilize the front of the road along Lincoln Avenue, but I would defer if somebody knows more, but I have not heard anything of that sort throughout the conversation.
Because, I mean, that's what the cinema did, was ask for access.
Right. That was definitely a question that they posed, but have not heard the same from Dunham's.
Right. Is it something we should propose to them?
You know, we certainly could, and I think we could do that after, after the fact as well, because we did not work an entrance off of Western into the plat on the movie theater. I think we left it as, we'll talk about it down-
When?
When times right. So I think we can do the same here.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Just further comment.
Hey, go ahead, Scott.
Well, I had a similar question that Anthony did, remembering how we had agreed to a plat that included access for the theater to Western Avenue, and I was expecting to seize more detail on that here. Frankly, I'm pleased that it wasn't included here, because I think dealing with it at a future time is a more appropriate way to do it, and not even having it penciled in makes it obvious that if there's going to be anything done later, you know, we got to start from scratch on that plan. And I think that's a better way to go. And so, the question's been answered. There hasn't been an access provided for, and I think that's correct. I think that's a good answer.
Thanks, Scott.
Well, a couple of questions I got here. Is this facility being connected to the mall still connected to the sewer and water with the mall, or does it have its own supply and sewer line? Is it something that's going to be added in the future? Because right now, I mean, is the mall still behind on their water bill? And if we're going to allow them to break this off, is this something that we're going to be able to get retrieved yet?
The answer is yes and no. They have their own sewer, but they don't have their own water.
Okay. Because, I mean, I don't want to see jeopardize the sale of this land, but I also want to make sure that, you know, hopefully, we can get the water hooked up individually, so we need to go after the mall to get our money back from them for the amount, from what I understand, they're considerably behind the last time I checked.
Don't they have to, we require them to become current in order to sell the piece to the movie theater?
Correct.
So they won't be able to sell this until they're current on their-
We did, we gave a bunch in arrears, and I don't know where they're at as of today, no, but-
But they would need to, I assume the same requirements would be that they would have to be current-
It would be a condition we'd have to make.
Yeah.
Or a condition of the plat.
Yeah.
Of the approval for the plat.
Tax, right? It's usually just property taxes by law, so that's, we put the extra.
We paid them. So that's state statute that it's, the property has to be paid before prior to transition.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not the utilities, though?
I mean, are these-
Really, that's not statute on that, but we put that in the last time.
Yeah.
What's that now?
It's not state statute that the utilities have to be current in order for a sale. It's a state statute that the property taxes have to be current. We put the, we put the condition that the utilities had to be current the last time to approve the sale, to approve the plat, correct?
Okay. All right.
That satisfactory?
Yeah. So I'd make a resolution approving the final plat for the subdivision of Dunham's with the provision that, you know, the utility bills have to be up to date.
Okay. Everyone, someone like to second that?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, we have the first reading of ordinance five, eighth series, which we just approved, amending the zoning map from I-2 to R-2 along Main Street. Someone would like to introduce that?
I'll introduce that.
Thank you. Scott?
I'll second.
No need to second on that one. Just need an introduction this evening. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the appropriate documents related to the Rustic Rough Dog Grooming Salon Economic Development Loan and Facade Loan. Clara Beck, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Business Development for Fergus Falls heard a request from Rustic Rough Grooming Salon to provide an economic development and facade loan in the amount of $50,000 and $10,000 respectively. These loans would be used to remodel a building that was recently purchased in August for them to start a new business in town. It would be a dog grooming business. Business Development heard the request, discussed the request, and felt that it was a good request and an excellent addition to the business community of Fergus Falls, and they have brought it forward to council tonight.
Thank you. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that one.
You got that one, Tom.
Question?
Got your name in the paper.
Question, Ben?
Scott, did you have a question?
I clearly indicated that there are two loans, one for $50,000 and one for $10.00. What's the difference, or why are there two?
The, well-
One is the facade loan.
Yeah. Ten's a facade loan.
The way our loan program works is there's an economic development portion of it, which is what, the cap on that is the $50,000, and then the facade loan would be going toward, so they have slightly different uses. They're remodeling inside and parts of outside, so the facade, the $10,000, is to cover expenses that would be falling more outside the building, and then the $50,000 is for renovations more inside the building, if that helps.
And that's what I expected. I believe the facade loan limit is at $25,000. Is that right?
That's correct.
And they just didn't need that much.
Nope. Correct.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving the refinancing of a 2020 bond issuance, and we'll call on our finance director, Bill Sonmore.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will also have Doug Green from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor, on over Zoom here. So he'll actually walk through the financing package with you. Just to give you a little introduction, we did bring this up a couple of meetings ago. We're looking at refinancing six different bonds, and then also having some new money in the bond issue as well. For that fire truck, we've talked about through the, throughout the year that we ordered last, boy, it was in the fall of 19, right? And it'll probably take delivery around February of 2021. So you're going to see me talk about that in the budget presentation a little bit, too. But we'll get Doug up here, and he can walk through the structure of this. You do have a resolution before you that our bond attorney had prepared. So it's a resolution approving the authorization for the issuance of general obligation bonds, 2020A. So we will be looking for your authorization, and I'll just turn it over to Doug now, and he can explain all the finer points of this and the good savings we're looking forward to. So turn it over to Doug.
Good evening, Doug, and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Bill, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's great to hear familiar voices. I wish I was there with you this evening. So as Bill mentioned, the purpose of this is just the next step in the process. We're formally authorizing the sale of the bonds. That doesn't, if something happens in the market over the next month or so, we don't want, we can delay it, you know, put it off. And definitely, if we want, this is just, just the next step in the process, to let you know where, where the market is at the time, what kind of savings, and what kind of payments that we're looking at. So as Bill mentioned, we are combining six outstanding bond issues into one, and as you know, the interest rate market is just very low, and we just so happen to have outstanding bond issues that are callable. That's not always, that's not always the case, but it is here. So we're combining them all into one, just really for efficiency purposes, and the larger the bond issue, the more marketable it is. We'll, internally, city staff will still track these separately, and they'll still be reported separately in the financial statements, just combining them for the purposes of this bond issue. Looking at, I believe you have what we call pre-sale report in front of you. It's massive, just because of the fact that there are six outstanding bond issues, and then one, what we call a new money piece for the fire truck. Looking at the key events, just right there in the middle of page one, this evening, we're authorizing the sale to go forward next week, and Bill, we need to plan that for maybe next Thursday or Friday. We'll have a rating call with Moody's Investor Service. The city's current rating is double A3. It's very good. I expect, you know, you've had the 2019 audit presentation recently. As you know, you're, you continue to be in very good shape financially, so I don't expect anything to change there. Unfortunately, in this type of environment, we certainly can't expect an upgrade, but I certainly expect it to stay the same. In the last week of September, we will negotiate the sale of the bonds with Robert W. Baird, and then bring it to the full council for your approval at the October meeting. And again, unless something happens in the market, I expect things to go very well. And then, over the next six weeks or so, it will be a massive paperwork shuffle, and we'll get the new bonds paid off on December 1 of 2020, and then we'll just start to, it's basically a replacement of those six bond issues with the new one, with lower interest rates and lower payments. So it's really as straightforward as that. Moving to page two, just at the top, that graph, I will, no need to go through this in general. This is a five-year graph of the Bond Buyer Index. It's just one of the major municipal bond indices that's used. And looking at that dark line, which is general obligation, which is what we're selling, you can see we're just at the, you know, very low. We've actually given back a little bit, but nothing too significant over the past two weeks or so. But I expect it to bump along that 2% line over the next, over the next month. Other than that, I guess what, we could turn, the rest of this document just goes through the financing plan. It really memorializes the decisions that were made, the financing plan. It, it talks about this statutory authority that the city has to issue these bonds. It covers, at the bottom of page three, the debt service coverage levels for those enterprises, for the water fund and for the waste management fund, which you see are in very good shape. And then, lastly, I guess if we could turn all, unless people are glad for punishment and want to go through, go through this document, we'll turn all the way back to page nine, and that, I'll give you a few seconds to get there. That just shows you how we do combine all the, all the six refunding purposes in that one. It's called the equipment certificate. Certificate's another word for a debt obligation bond. It really doesn't matter. It's a, it's a debt obligation, and for a combined total of $8,215,000. And looking at the bottom of that page, we award the bonds based off a true interest cost, and because each one of these bonds has a different repayment period, there'll be slightly different interest rates, but overall, we're looking at about 1%. So it will probably be replacing about bonds that have coupons around 3% to 4% with 1%, and that's where we get the savings. And then, finally, on the last page, page 10, you can see the estimated annual savings. But as you probably know, these are split up between, you know, tax levy and water fund and waste management. So not all the, unfortunately, not all of those savings are going against the tax levy, but nonetheless, we're looking at, you know, around $560,000 savings, which is about 6% to 7% of outstanding debt service. So it adds up to some pretty nice savings.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, that is $560,000 savings over the next 11 years. That's pretty significant. Thanks for the work on that. Thank Bill, Sandy, for the work in identifying those savings. Anyone have any questions for Doug while he's on the Zoom, or for Bill? You're none. I'd entertain a resolution for that, authorizing the- I'd entertain a resolution for that, authorizing the...
One question, Ben. What was the longest amount of time, what's the term, when all this is done with? Was it five years, is that what I heard him say, or did I misunderstand that, what the terms are?
2032. Doug, what?
I'm talking about the existing and the new bonds.
Well, once the thing is combined into one new bond, what's the term on that?
The new bond issuance.
Is that the, is that the 2032, Doug? Is that when that, the new bond is?
That's correct. So if I heard the question correctly, the interest rates in, I can direct you to the page where it is on page 17 of the document, and you can see, again, I'll give you a minute to get there.
2032, yeah.
2032, very good.
So the first, the year one will be maturity on December 1st, 2021, and we're expecting a coupon of 0.3%, and then going out 12 years to 2032, looking at a coupon of 1.45%.
Thank you, Doug, I think that...
The 1% that I referenced is a calculated amount, it's about a weighted average of about 1%.
Thank you, Doug. I think that answered their questions on that, and I did want to just point out with that, that we kept the terms of the bonds the same, so we did not lengthen our debt service at all. We did keep it with the original plan, so that we're seeing those savings. We didn't shorten it either, but we did keep those terms the same, did not lengthen, so...
Yeah, but again, to emphasize that $560,000 is very significant, so...
Yep.
Thanks for the work again on that. And with that, I'd entertain a resolution accepting the refinancings of those bonds. Caroline? Krista, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Cassis.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Thank you, Doug. Item number four...
Thank you very much.
Is a resolution accepting an RFP for the property located at 320 West Alcott Avenue. We'll call on Guy Taylor, our public works director. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening, thank you, Your Honor. In 2018, as detailed in the memo, the city purchased this property at 320 West Alcott. It was in a dilapidated state. We did a lot of work cleaning the property up, and we raised the structure that was there. Ralph did a lot of work cleaning up the title, and we got to a point where it was sellable, so we issued, you issued a RFP back in June. We received no responses to that. We reissued it again in July with a September 1 deadline, and we got one proposal from GNS Holdings, a local company here in town. Their proposal is to purchase the property for $13,000. To date, our costs on the property are a little over $27,000, so we would be taking $14,000 out of the property abatement fund and the budget, and covering that $14,000. But it would be an opportunity to have a single-family home built on the property and get the property back on the tax rolls.
Thank you, Guy.
I could offer the resolution, but then I've also got a question.
You get a resolution, you get a second? Thank you, Jim, go ahead, Anthony.
The one question I have would be that, you know, in light of the fact that we're taking, we're doing this, you know, at 13,000, and it cost us 27, how do we exempt it from being eligible for housing tax credit and giving them another $5,000? Or do you want to just give it to them and be done with it?
Well...
Two things, Your Honor.
They're not going to apply till next year, which the council's going to have the conversation before then.
I was just going to say, the council can make that decision, you know, if that's the desire of the council, then don't approve an abatement, and I think that's fair, given the circumstances. The other thing I was going to say, Ralph just reminded us, you know, you can act on this RFP tonight, but you can't technically sell the land tonight because of the charter, we have to introduce the land sale, so if you're going to approve this RFP, make that the introduction this evening, and then we'll, at the next meeting, can act on the actual sale of the property. But this council sets the rules as it relates to the abatements, and, you know, I think if that's the consensus of the council, I'd just tell them that now, as we go back and say, "We've accepted your RFP, but..."
I think it's reasonable, obviously.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we have to approve each one individually, so, you know...
Well, I think currently, we have it where, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had a motion where we're going to honor this year, but we're not going to accept applications for 2021 at this moment, so...
No, I mean, if you make an application today, you don't have to build it until 2021.
But this is an application to build it, this is just...
No, I know.
...by the land.
But there's still four months of this year to go.
But I think Anthony's point is, I think, I mean, I don't know if we need to make a decision, but obviously, we can just say tonight that that's, you know, we're going to take that into consideration when we have a discussion on any tax rebates, the fact that we have $14,000 we've taken from the abatement program already.
So...
Is that...
Yep, yep.
All right.
I just want to highlight the fact that obviously, we're taking our loss on it, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and it, yeah, absolutely.
For the right reasons.
We have it back on the tax roll.
For the right reasons, yeah.
All right, so we have a resolution in a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,230,474.18, and if there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director. Let's get a resolution on the floor.
Call out for the resolution.
Resolution?
I'll second.
There's a second? Scott, you have a question?
I have two questions, and this will be for Bill. The first question was regarding the annual membership dues for the League of Minnesota Cities, and not that I'm against it, and I'm trying to make that point, but at $12,000, apparently, that's a payment that's quarterly, according to Bill, so we're spending $48,000 a year?
Nope, that's annual, that's not a quarterly payment.
Okay, so I misunderstood how that was. I thought, boy, that sure seems high. So $12,000 is our annual dues?
Correct.
And it goes to the League of Minnesota Cities? Okay, but you said, why did I misunderstood about it being quarterly? What did I get wrong there?
I don't know, did I answer something else in the email that was a quarterly? I'm trying to think back to...
There was a different part that was to the Minnesota Department of Health.
That's the quarterly one. That was $12,000 as well, but that was, yep, Minnesota Department of Health, we pay quarterly per water connection.
Okay.
So League of Cities is annual.
All right, so I billed the two, so let me back up. I have no, no issue to make on the League of Minnesota Cities. On the Minnesota Department of Health, at almost $50,000 a year, I guess my question is, what do we get for that? Or what do they do with that money?
I would have to research further what they do with the money. It is a state statute, so it's a mandated fee upon us, so we always do pay that fee because it's in state law. I'm thinking, and I'm just scrolling back a little bit, you know, since it's dealing with water connections, they're using it to make sure we have safe water and run their programs of overseeing water in Minnesota, but I can't quote that for sure. I'm just reeling back a little there, but...
So it's basically a tax?
It's a mandated fee through the state, and it did just go up this year, I believe. It went up a significant amount from where it was. I think we used to pay 6,000 to 9,000 a quarter, so I could dig back and find some of that when they increased the fee, that would maybe tell us a little more.
That's interesting to learn something about that. The other question I had was on the new police car, and I guess the reason it just caught my attention is that spending $40,000 on a car isn't maybe so amazing to anybody, but still, it's 40,000 to 50,000 for a car, when you see cars in the news, police cars in particular, burning up these days, it's just kind of interesting to know what that might be costing other cities as their equipment budgets are impacted in that way.
Yeah, we, an interesting side with that is we ordered these cars quite some time ago, so we've waited on a long delivery for them as well, and have been working with the chief on that over the year, but you pay for the car, you see probably in here the, is this one to Nelson?
It was 32,000.
Okay, 32,000, and then I think we can pay anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 to outfit that car. Now, the reason it could be 5,000 to 10,000 is because we're taking all the equipment off in the previous car that we're trading in, we do keep that, and we reinstall that on the new car. Some of the light bars now are getting quite old, but we do still use them. The one thing is when model changes have significant changes, some of the, the equipment doesn't fit in the new car. The one thing I'm thinking of is like that barrier between the front seat and the back seat. Of course, if you, if that body style changes significantly where that no longer fits, then we're buying a new one for that, but, so it can be anywhere from, you know, 37 up to 42. We've had pretty good luck seeing it in the lower 30s. Our police department has done a good job getting good prices on that, and I think we typically would do three a year, would be the goal. Again, we're trading in a unit on this, so we're not adding to our fleet. I know we'll be getting rid of it, I don't know if there's a trade-in on this one, but he probably sells them on auction, too, so...
Thanks, Bill.
You bet.
Any other questions, Scott? Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you, Bill.
All right. Got any further questions? If not, we have a resolution in a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Cassis.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. The honor of board committee or department reports this evening, under reports from staff and administrative officers, item number one is a resolution amending the fund balance policy, and we will again call on our finance director, Bill Sonmore.
Thank you again, Your Honor. I'm strategically placing this item ahead of the budget because some of what's in the budget relates to this fund balance policy. The city council adopted a fund balance policy back in 2006, and then we amended that policy back in 2011, and today, I'm coming before you to tweak this policy a little bit. What the policy has been for the general fund, now, think of that, here's the general fund is, our main funding source is our property taxes and local government aid, which we receive twice a year, so in the summer and then at the end of the year, we receive these large revenues. So you do need fund balance to cash flow to get to those payment times. Looking at the state auditors, they make a recommendation for cities to have 35% to 50% of subsequent years, now I'm going to use the word working capital expenditures. Our fund balance policy has been of subsequent year expenditures, so I've always based that on total expenditures, and you can have some accumulated capital dollars, like that fire truck we're purchasing, where we've built that up over the years, and that's actually in a separate fund balance, capital outlay, and when I'm talking about this policy, we're talking about the unassigned or for that working capital. So I'm proposing to you that we change that, the wording, so that we specify working capital fund balance, and that really would be the intent of that. Now, it does make this fund balance policy, you know, we can go a little lower in a dollar amount with it, but as you heard Doug Green bolster as well, that we are in good financial condition, our fund balance policy has been working, and I am comfortable if we go to this working capital level, because that's what we're cash flowing, those working capital things. The other example would be if you bond for that fire truck, and that's in a revenue source, but you have it in your expenses, you don't need fund balance to fund that, what you bonded for. So I really felt that this is the right way to go, of having it applied to working capital. And then we could drop it from 50% down to 40%, I don't think in my time here, we'll ever see us ever get to 50%, maybe, maybe to 40 would be a good goal. So tightening that range a little bit, as of the end of 19, we were at about 37% of the subsequent year's total expenditures. So, you know, we've been in good shape there. As I will, the next agenda item, when I delve into the budget, I'll explain this a little bit more, and getting down to probably that 35% level of working capital expenditures. So this, you know, by using working capital, that does mirror what the state auditor, well, what government finance officers of, within the United States, our organization recommends. So that's kind of where I went digging to re-research this and pulled out the working capital, so...
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
Does that put us pretty comparable to how other actual cities play it? Is, I mean, are they in that 35% range, too?
It, it does, in this 35 to 40, when I did some looking at that, and again, this doesn't change us a lot from the fund balance policy we did have, it's just narrowing us in a little bit more on the working capital.
Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll try, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second, Caroline, thank you. Any further questions of Bill? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Cassis.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. And now, Bill, preliminary 2021 budget and levy.
All right, we'll get that, Claire's pulling that up on the screen here. So as we start, kind of how I start every year, is reminding you that we work the budget process through a tax levy committee, and that is our mayor, council member Anthony Hicks, and city administrator Andrew Bremseth. So they have been working, you know, for a long time, many, many weeks, on this budget. We start this process back in May as a city, coming to today, so that's why I kind of say it always becomes half of my year is working on the budget, but... So the tax levy committee's been working hard to develop this budget that is before you tonight. Let's see, we'll get, how do I wake this keyboard up now?
[inaudible].
Yep, that's what I'm doing. It does not have a on/off button on this one. Okay, we'll, there we are. Okay, so looking at the timeline of the budget, like I said, in May, we start the process as departments of the city. Tax levy committee started meeting in July, going over what departments have submitted. We're here tonight, September 8th, with a proposed budget and levy. I'm not going to ask for your action on this budget tonight, we're going to come to the next meeting when you can approve that. So council approves that proposed budget and levy. We need to get it to Ottertail County by the end of September, so we need to certify our proposed levy to them at that time. And then the tax levy, we'll continue to work on this budget throughout the fall, before we come back in December, and we'll go into that in some individual slides here. But on December 7th, we will have a public meeting at 6 o'clock or later, that is Minnesota State statute, where the public would be allowed to speak. We'll give another presentation at that time, where this comes in at, and then, of course, the end of the year, we get that to Ottertail County, so they can get it rolling for 2021. Some of our overall assumption that, in this budget, we have health insurance increases in the budget of 12%. Now, right after we got this all completed, we heard good news that it went down to 9.5%. That's one of the adjustments we'll make after tonight, before we come back in December, but 9.5 is still high, that's still a large increase in health insurance, but I'm glad it's lower than 12, so we will come back.
But Bill, one thing we have to remember was last year, we had zero.
Correct, and it was low the year before that, too, I believe, so we have had some really good years, so, you know, we're part of the pool, Lakes Country Service Cooperative, so it does help to have a leveling effect. I believe our rates should have been even higher than this, and the pool helped to level that down to 9.5. So electric, 4%, city, I have 3% in here, I might be a little high on that, I'll tell you more about that as we get through. Natural gas, 4%, our insurances, liability, property, auto, and workers' comp, you'll see the rates there at 4, 8, 4, and 7, some higher increases there. We were a little bit surprised in 2020, some, I know our workers' comp and our property came in higher than what we had budgeted and what we were planning on in working with the league, so higher claims on their end, you know, you know how it works. So the big picture of the budget, 2021, proposed revenues at 41,479,335, proposed expenditures at 39,987,833, our proposed property tax levy of 6,786,206, that is a 2.75% increase in the property tax levy. I'll tell you now, and I'll tell you again later, the tax levy committee has the goal of coming back to you in December with that being at about zero. So that's why I said they're going to continue to... with that being at, at about zero. So that's why I said they're going to continue to work through the fall. We wanted to come in now because we have some things we're not sure of, what's going to transpire this fall, if, you know, at the state level. Uh, and we'll talk about that as we get into local government aid as well. So just a snapshot here, but it's 2.75 now is what we'll be asking you to approve when we come back. But in December, that's going to be lower. And our tax capacity rate, um, projecting right now, I did get values from the county. Um, our 2020 rate, you can see moving, um, down actually, a 2.6% decrease in the tax rate. Now, that sounds good, you know, right off the bat. And if your value did not change on your home, your tax bill then would go down. However, most taxpayers will still see an increase even with that rate being lower, because we're seeing values increasing across the city. So if those values were increasing because it was just new construction, that's where we would see decreases. But, um, the rate may decrease, but I think everyone's homes and businesses, we're going to see increases, so you'll still see.
But, but let's just be clear, that 2.6% decrease is based on a 2.75, 2.75% increase.
Correct.
The tax levy committee has committed to a zero, which would then make that decrease even greater with the tax capacity.
That's correct.
Not to confuse people with that, but, um, yeah.
Yep, good point. So we'll see that, um, when we come back to you in December, or even prior, if, um, if the tax levy completes the work prior to that. So we, um, break the budget down by fund types. We have the general fund, special revenues. Um, within special revenue, that's Public Library, Port Authority, Bigwood Center, some of the larger ones, all our TIF districts, tax abatements. They have, um, dedicated revenue sources for special revenue fund. Um, general fund, that's our general operating fund of the city, where most of the business takes place. Debt service, that's where we pay the bonds. We're going to see those savings from what we just talked about in those funds. I do not have those built in as of today. So I'm projecting another $45,000 of decreases to the levy. That's part of the work that's going to happen after tonight as well. Since we don't know how the market is going to go, I didn't want to cut ourselves short. Um, cause as a reminder, we can always decrease the levy going to December, but we could not bring it back. So if I started with debt service too low, it's kind of tough luck. We can't bring it back up in December. So, um, we'll, we'll see more savings in there when we get that refinancing done. Capital projects, uh, we'll have a slide on that. The enterprise funds, those are run like private business, so the, the user, um, fees, um, pay for those funds. Internal service, again, that's our fleet of vehicles that serves the other departments of the city. Comes down to our total, total budgets. Revenues broken up, um, by source. You can see charges and sales is our largest source of revenue. That's all your utility charges, um, the liquor store sales, all the various charges in the enterprise funds fall into there. Inner governmental at 16%. Local government aid is within that pie. And then property taxes at 16%. Um, so certainly, local government aid and property taxes, um, big funding sources for those governmental funds. This graph is, um, bringing all of the city together, including those enterprise funds. So you can see when you look at it, property taxes, 16% of the whole. So lots of things going into the city budget. And then the expenditure side, um, certainly wages, benefits, health insurance. We're a service-driven organization with people and equipment. So that's, um, certainly gets to be a big part of the budget. Liquor store inventory in there because we're operating those stores. Capital outlay shows up here as well. So some of those larger pieces of the pie, just showing you how the money is expended. Showing the proposed levy again, and the change, um, going up 181,000,422, or that 2.75. Here, we're driving home that fact again, that the tax levy committee will continue to work towards the goal of zero impact, um, for 2021. So, just as we got kind of done going through, but wanted to put it there as another reminder. So the process, Ottertail County, um, assessor determines the market values of, you know, individual properties. And then, um, the state of Minnesota has class rates that you apply against that, um, market value that's been determined, come up with a tax capacity. So that's the value that a, a property is taxed upon. You, as a city council, establish the levy at a flat dollar amount. There's always a lot of confusion, you know, in the public about, we are just raising taxes if you raise my value. No, we come up with a budget and come up with a flat dollar. We need 6,786,206. Ottertail County, you goes, get that for us and spread that over the property, and, um, you know, send that to Fergus Falls. Um, so you take that levy, divided by that tax capacity, we talked about all of them together, you come up with that tax rate. So then that rate, that was decreasing 2.6, multiply that times that tax capacity on the home, and that's how you get your tax bill, so. Here's just a chart showing those tax levies and rates. You can see our slight increase of that 181, and then the line going down because the rate's going down. Again, I, I put this little note that most taxpayers will still see an increase even with that decreasing rate. And again, this will look, you know, get to December, have it zero, the red line will be flat, then you'll see a further downward, um, trend on that other, on the tax rate. Then, um, we do, um, a trend analysis here of where the tax rates and levies, um, the tax rates and then the impacts on the homes are going. So when you look at, you know, a $125,000 home or $500,000 business, and you see that actually going down, that's because you're just comparing apples to apples there. You're not building any of the, um, the increase in values there. LGA, so within, um, our budget, we have the certified level of local government aid at, I think it was 3,800, 3.8 million, I believe. Um, I'm trying to think, where did I write that down? Anyway, you can see, I've got two lines for 2021 on here on this bar chart. So we have just a slight increase from, uh, 2020 to 2021 in our certified local government aid. Now, us as staff and working with the tax levy committee, we are trying to take, hopefully, the worst-case scenario in building this budget. That, the state of Minnesota, we are facing a deficit. It's going to be a very large deficit. Um, the state is not talking about local government aid yet, but in working with the League of Minnesota Cities, they also recommend that we prepare for that. So we're preparing a budget thinking we could lose 20% of local government aid, or about $790,000 below, um, what was certified. That's why I have two lines there showing. The first one there, 2021, that's what's certified. We've built in the budget something less, or $790,000 less, to, um, take a conservative approach on that. So taxes and state aid, talks a little bit more about that. Um, in the general fund, we're looking at increasing that levy, 152,081 at this time. Again, that will look different and lower when we come back in December. We just talked about local government aid, how we've built in a 20% loss of local government aid. And then, um, wanted to kind of remind you about the LCCMR property with the dairy. Um, that project will be getting completed now this year. We'll get that land transaction done in 2021. So this, um, grant is showing up again in next year, because it's not going to get completed this year, but transaction get completed next year, we'll get that grant revenue in.
So, Bill?
Yep.
Just a question on that LGA, and I'm sure there's a reasoning out with LGA. How'd you come up with a 20% decrease? Is that like a proportion of what we receive, or is that just kind of a?
A proportion of what we receive. We kind of, we started the brainstorming of, okay, we received our first half this year. There's no guarantee we won't get unallotted at the end of the year. Now, we're thinking we probably won't. We're hoping we won't at the end of '20. Um, but if we look back in '08, the city did get unallotted at that time. So you'd already spent all your budgets, and then, you know, after the November forecast comes out, the governor then, at that time, unallotted local government aid. So we tried to come up with a good estimate of just kind of talking through it. There's no magic science behind this. Um, I wish I could say it's this great formula coming up, but we wanted to try to be realistic. Um, I guess that's kind of, wanted to be realistic, um, with the chance of losing, so.
Last time it was 25%.
So.
In the ballpark, I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, within the general fund, um, we, um, we are going to use some fund balance to help balance this budget. And when we u, use a fund balance, um, I want to say this correctly, I just want this to be so clear. Um, there's also going to be unspent bond proceeds that are part of the fund balance. So we're going to bond, you just, we went through that with Doug, for that fire truck. So $445,000 of proceeds, um, of which 437 is for the truck. There's some issuance costs on top of that. Um, we're going to bond for it this year, get the money in this year, but we're not going to spend it this year. So those bond proceeds will be in a restricted fund balance. That's where we'll close through in an, in the accounting way of that. And then next year, we're going to need to use that fund balance to pay for that fire truck. So it's not accumulated earnings, um, anything like that. It's just the timing on the bond proceeds, because we are saving about $15,000 by rolling that bond issue for the truck in now, rather than doing it separate, and having an own rating and all those extra fees. Um, so that's why you're going to see in the budget, use of fund balance, 1,262,000. Okay, big number. Um, but that's why I wanted to break it down clearly, that part of that's for the fire truck. 437 from the bonding. We are going to use cash of 125,000 and pay down on that truck. Um, the fire department's been building that, um, fund up. We, um, budget about 60,000 a year, get that saved up so we can pay that down and not pay interest on that portion of it. Um, so that's one portion of it. And then the dairy, I said that transaction will close next year. Um, it's always been the plan to use 400,000 matching funds of the fund balance to, um, match that $600,000 grant. So that's coming out. Leaving, what's left is $300,000 that we are truly using fund balance to help balance this budget. Rainy day funds, that's, um, that's why we have fund balance. And we've, we've talked about it for years, for those years when we're going to need it. Well, here we're at that year. Um, this is where we relate to the fund balance policy. Um, when I looked at our unassigned fund balance at the end of last year, took off all these other uses we were going to use for it, like the 400,000 being the big one for the dairy, we would be at 35% fund balance by using this 300. That's how I came up with that number, that we could use 300, still be at our policy. Now, for a city of Fergus Falls, we have, you know, all these other funds. We have our enterprise funds that are holding cash balances. A city like us can get by with, um, being at the lower end of our, um, fund balance policy. If we were a small city and didn't have cash balances of these other funds, you would need to be up closer to the 50% to do that cash flow. But we, um, you know, being a larger city, we have, um, you know, the other funds for the water and the sewer plant, all that that we're holding, that help us to cash flow as well, allowing us to be closer to the bottom of our fund balance policy. And then, I wanted to point out, um, we're taking an additional 200,000 from the liquor store this year, or in 2021, to help balance the budget as well. We're transferring the normal 500,000 that the liquor store does, adding 200 to that this year, um, because we're in the rainy day year, so.
And the funds are there to do that.
They are there. Um, the liquor store, you, you'll see as we get to that slide, um, we're doing better than the budget is, um, says we are. Again, we're comparing budget to budget on this slide, but, you know, we are having good sales and with, the cash is, is in the bank there to move it. So last year, we pointed out, you know, different things that are happening in general government. I'm just going to say throughout the city, we're doing, um, budget reductions everywhere. We've gone to departments doing what they can. I do want to let you know that Fergus Falls is a very lean city. Over the last 20 years, we have, you know, went through these periods of budget cuts. We have cut staff. You know, 10 years ago, we, we, um, cut a bunch out. 10 years prior to that, we cut a bunch out, and even throughout in between. So not a lot of big chunks we could, you know, just, nothing you can just easily identify. But our departments, um, throughout, made cuts wherever it was available. So that's my blanket statement on, um, general government. Public safety, um, you can see the old truck that we're trading in, and there's, um, a drawing of the new one we'll be receiving. And this just talks about what Doug talked about, and we just went through. But, um, sharing there, 437 we're financing, that'll be a nine-year levy. We're going to start out at a $40,000 levy, and then that'll go up a little bit. Um, but again, we're taking levy dollars from the fire department capital budget. When I said they're budgeting 60, we're dropping that down to 20, taking the 40 over here and kind of stepping that levy in, so that we're not hitting that full 40 on the city this year. We're actually, you know, you're, we're moving it between departments. Streets and highways, um, we're just maintaining our fundings for, um, seal coat, mill and overlay projects at 374.4. We did a couple years at 20% increases there. We're holding that flat this year, so no increase there. But we didn't cut back on it either. We kept the funding there, but we're not increasing it for 2021. And just a side note, you'll have to thank Lynn for all the nice pictures she put in here, kind of bringing us back to, um, many years ago and, um, how things were at one time in our streets. You know, we've done a lot of improvements. Granted, this is very old. But we have, you know, done some good improvements over, in the last five to 10 years, so. Park and rec, um, we are proposing cutting back on the tree trimming and the diseased tree removal a little bit. Um, so we're cutting from 180 down to 155. But we wanted to point out, we did double that budget from 2017 to 2018. We went from 90,000 to 180, so now we're coming back down to 155 this year, with the hope of, you know, stepping that back up as we come into future years.
Bill, I would say tree trimming, not diseased trees. We're not, we're, we're going to remove diseased trees.
You are correct. Thank you for that correction. For me, it's one budget, but yeah, it's the trimming we'd have to back off on. So, guy, you hear that. Um, yeah, when the, when the trees are diseased, we have no choice. They're coming out, so. Economic development, we have Greater Fergus Falls in here for 50,000, um, as, um, has been the case for 2020. We do have a new tax abatement levy coming on for $40,000, um, for North Star Behavioral Health. This is located at 1174, um, Wester, right? Is that, I just was blank. I remembered the 1174. Um, Ottertail County also did a tax abatement on this. It's for 10 years. So again, you have that new value coming on. We're just not capturing that. We're, you know, using that for the tax abatement, so it's a zero impact for those, um, 10 years, with the goal of then after that, um, then we see the, the property tax, um, benefit. Again, this property was not taxable prior to this, um, as well. Port Authority, we talked about the, the dairy and how that will be completed. Um, the Port Authority did, um, pass a resolution that the city council levy $60,000. Uh, we did request them to decrease that from 75,000. Just, you know, it's all the same taxpayers that are, that are paying, um, these taxes. Pointed out that, uh, remember the Port Authority owns the Community Behavioral Health Hospital. They lease it to the state of Minnesota, so the state's covering those expenses. And then the port also owns the building at, um, 1814 North First Avenue. That was the old Armory Reserve Building. Uh, leased that to Lakes Country Service Cooperative for the Level 4 education facility, and they are covering all the costs for that as well. So the Port Authority just facilitating these projects and, um, being the conduit in which those happen. Public library, total budget, 898,058. Mainly property tax-supported and, um, regional library aid as well. Similar picture to last year, um, decrease on expenditures, um, as Gail pulled back on those, like all other departments. Bigwood Events Center, a new slide for you this year, because things are changing there a little bit. Um, that facility was constructed in 2000, opened in 2001. Uh, it was operated under contract management for the last 20 years. So that contract ends at the end of, um, or in, beginning of April, uh, 2021. And the city, we have received notice that they are not going to, um, renew that contract with us. So they're done managing that. So, um, you know, it's, it's our time to look at where do we go in the future with how we manage the facility. Now, you couple that with, um, COVID-19 impacts on meetings and conferences. As we all know, they're not happening right now. They're all happening over Zoom. So, um, now is the time to, you know, evaluate the future for the event center. Um, so we did build a estimated budget for some staff time to do some maintenance and repairs, keeping the HVAC system, you know, cleaned and operating the, um, electricity, the natural gas. I did put it at a lower amount, because potentially this would be more of a dark facility, um, during 2021. I am proposing, and it's included within the budget, we would transfer that 39,000, so that had a little interest earning, so transferring should add a little interest earning, so transferring 36,500 from the liquor store to cover that, thus preserving the cash balance of 229,500 that we have as of today for future capital improvements. So that's how we built that, but wanted to, you know, that's something new, change, I guess. Capital Improvement Fund, we're looking at the Union Avenue improvements for 958,000, Whitford and Bancroft reconstruction there, and Wyron's Road. There will be utilities with some of this as well, but this is the governmental fund side of that. That's, so we're showing the street portions here. Wyron's Road, we just talked about that, street extension, sidewalk program at 30,000. And then we'll see where the bonding bill goes and our other funding sources, but the downtown riverfront here, Phase 1, the west block we have put in here. So that will remain to be seen, but remember, a budget is an estimate. And of course, when those projects go, they come before you to be acted on. Then we have our enterprise fund budgets. I won't go through these, they're just snapshots. Liquor store being profitable, 2020 is going to, you know, even look a little bit better than what we had on the budget here, but we're comparing budget to budget there. Again, making those transfers we talked about. And again, Tax Levy Committee wanting to minimize the impacts to residents here, we're looking at not increasing utility rates this year. Normally, I'm here telling you what we're going to change in water, sewer, stormwater, refuse rates. We're going to try to leave them alone where we can. We have made some, you know, aggressive changes, particularly in the water fund the last few years, so we're going to ride this one out this year and recommend not doing any, except for the refuse fund, and we'll get into that shortly. Shows our refuse fund profitability here, estimating down a little bit on operating income in 2021. We do expect an 8% to 10% increase in our disposal fees. So when we go around to collect the garbage and we dispose it with Ottertail County, we get a bill for that. That's going to go up 8% to 10%. So we need to increase our revenue side, the disposal fee on the utility bill. So looking at about an 8% increase. We'll bring, dial that in when we come in for December too, and, you know, get it, make sure if we're still on this page, are we going to tweak that a bit?
Bill, I got a comment, maybe a question on that. You know, we talked, a long time ago, when we implemented the recycling, you know, I think we have good participation in that, but there was discussions around trying to effectively weigh garbage and charge individual homeowners based on the, you know, we're seeing these increases in disposal fees, and there are a lot of homes that I think do a very effective job recycling and some that maybe don't. And I don't know how we would go about doing that, but is that something we could look at, you know, for overall disposal fees, to reduce fees and get people to be more incentivized to recycle? That might be an opportunity to reduce our fees, obviously, figuring about the garbage. I don't know how you'd do that, if you'd have to have a specific truck weighing disposal, or how that would be, but.
You probably would. I think you would have to have that capability as you pick the can, right? So.
Is that something nationwide that people do, or would that be, would we be the anomaly?
When we did look at it, there's a few cities in the United States that did it, but it's more common in Europe.
I think you were the one that brought it up, weren't you? Maybe nice, I mean, we're seeing these huge increases, and I think, you know, it would be a way to justify charging individual homes based upon their usage versus some that do a very good job recycling and have very little garbage. But, and obviously for the environment, that'd be a good thing too. I don't know where that puts us tonight, I don't, we don't need to dive down that, but just something.
We'll call it food for thought tonight, that we can.
Good thinking on your toes.
Anyway, so that's the only utility rate increase that we're looking at. And again, we'll bring that back to you in December. Sewer fund, certainly remaining profitable there, and that's certainly the goal. Remember, water and sewer, large infrastructure, all that in the ground, our plants, so we need to be maintaining our rates to make sure that we are replacing the capital needs in those areas. Water fund, same thing. Again, we have higher operating income here than we do in the sewer. We have a higher cash balance in the sewer fund than we do in water, and that's why we've needed to make those higher rate increases to come up with higher operating income for those capital replacements. Stormwater, same story there. And our equipment fund is our internal, again, fund for our fleet of equipment. And next steps, so you've heard this several times tonight, the Tax Levy Committee is committed to continue working on this to bring, you know, back a zero-impact budget levy for the budget in December. And then laid out the calendar again, what this will look like. Come back for your approval of the proposed in, on September 21st. Get that to the county by the 30th. Public meeting on December 7th, to the county by December 28th. And again, at the next meeting, we also need to set that December 7th meeting and the date, time, place, all that will be in a resolution for you then. Also within your packet, you have got a summary, I won't go over it now, we've hit it all, but this one-page summary for you to take with you that kind of nails down all these facts. Andrew, I don't know, do I have anything you want to add to that? So that's just from the Tax Levy Committee, again, kind of narrowing it down to a one-page sheet for you. So there's our presentation for tonight.
I would just like to thank the Tax Levy Committee, had an opportunity last year to be on, and obviously with the challenges we're facing, I think you guys have done a very good job to come before us with some pretty good numbers, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Justin. I'll just say that Tax Levy Committee, Anthony, myself, and Andrew, we're all on the same page, we're committed to coming back at zero, but I got to give Bill and Sandy a lot of credit because, and any of you who have had the chance to work on the tax, the budget, it is, it's a lot of work, and so, a lot of work goes into it, and so thanks to Bill, and Sandy, thanks, thanks both. And if, if, just to the council or to the public, if any questions as you dive into like the details of this, we're still working on this weekly, and so, you know, if you have questions, if you have concerns, comments, whatever, bring them back to us, and we're, you know, we're committed to getting through this, you know, there's, as Bill mentioned, there's some unknowns we don't know right now. There's some things that we don't know, and we're going to be taking them into consideration over the next several weeks. So just be, if you have questions or concerns, just reach out.
Could you please just name the members of the Tax Levy Committee?
Yeah, so it's, there's three members. It's City Minister Andrew Bremseth, Councilmember Anthony Hicks, and myself are the three members of the Tax Levy Committee. And then, of course, Bill and Sandy from the Finance Department are instrumental, and, you know, the five of us are the ones that meet, so. Any other questions for Bill? Scott?
Only question I have is, things have been brought up in the past, and I know we're trying to keep it down at zero, and it's looking like we're not even for sure about the LGA. And as far as the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, what benefits do we get from being a part of that?
Andrew can probably even speak to this, and the mayor can as well, but one of the main things is, I know the Coalition advocates for local government aid for cities out in Greater Minnesota City, which, as you can see, it's a big part of our budget, and we do rely heavily on local government aid. And I, I, of course, would like to see us not get cut LGA, and we wouldn't have to use those fund balances, so.
You know, what I would add is, I would just say that the Tax Levy Committee has had preliminary conversations about, you know, Coalition, League, just our different memberships, and we're going to keep having those conversations, so you can give us your input, Ben, I appreciate it. I think next year, and we're going to have this discussion, but with LGA being such a top priority at the legislator, legislative body next year, the Coalition is the entity that works on behalf of local government aid, the funding, the formulas, et cetera, et cetera. So anyway, just, we'll bring that back between now and December 7th. We have, we have had that conversations, conversation.
Any other questions?
I got one thing I would like to bring up. I think that, you know, well, obviously, we've got a shortfall of $180,000 that we need to kind of work on between now and December. I think, you know, we're, we're facing kind of uncertain times, and we're asking department heads to reduce budgets by making cost cuts. I feel that as elected officials, we should support those efforts and lead somewhat by example. And I'd like to take a, I'd like to kind of propose to the council and the mayor that we take a 25% reduction over the next two years, which would be an $18,000 a year impact, which would go 10% towards that $180,000. I think, you know, we're, you know, the state is not going to make any major cuts to LGA or an allotment until after the election, which leaves us very little time. And I think, you know, we're asking a lot of, of staff, you know, we've, we've cut positions, you know, a number of times, and I think this would be prudent for us to do something like this. So I'd like to make a motion that elected officials take a temporary reduction of 25% in their monthly stipend, starting January 1st, 2021, until December 31st, 2022, and that on January 1st, 2023, it be reinstated to the current levels. I think it's, I think it's just a good thing for us to do. COVID-19 has impacted a lot of people, it's impacted a lot of businesses, and we have to do everything we possibly can to, you know, ease the burden as much as possible, so.
Thanks, Anthony. The only thing I would note in your, in your motion, and we'll just second the motion. Thanks. Just to clarify, I believe you have to have a, you have to have a, if you were, you can't just ra, we can't raise that now, but you know, I mean, you have to have an election, or it has to be a resolution that has an election between the time you raise it or lower. So that would be the only, I understand your intent, I just want to make sure we do it legally when it comes to raising or lowering the pay of elected officials. Ross?
Right. Pursuant to our city code, I mean, you can't do a change in your salary without going through the process and having it become effective after the, the next election. So I assume your, your motion would contemplate that, and we would do an equivalent, I believe, in an ordinance, I think you said, by, is it said by ordinance?
By ordinance, yep.
So do an ordinance to that effect. So I assume your, your motion is to direct me to draft such an ordinance for your review to be effective at a date after the election.
It would be, yes.
I'll second that.
Resolution in a second, or motion, I'm sorry, asking the city attorney in a second. Anyone have any questions? Well, we can, obviously, we'll address the ordinance as it, when it comes back, but we'll lead the motion. Yes, Andrew?
I was just going to ask if Councilmember Hicks could reiterate the dates that he proposed, so we can grab that for drafting ordinance.
It was from January 21st, 2021, till, until December 31st, 2022, a two-year, a two-year respite.
Thank you.
Needless to say, I didn't have my earpieces in today, so I didn't hear the whole.
You're working for free.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion? Scott?
I believe it was last year, there was a suggestion, at least a motion made by Jim Fisher, actually raised the amount. I don't know if it's called the stipend or what it is, but that.
I'm not sure what it was.
Recall that it got much discussion, but for what it's worth, there's been conversations both to go up and down, from what I recall.
But it was voted, actually, the last time we took action, it was voted down. And again, it has to happen before an election, so.
And that was two years ago when I brought that up.
Yeah, two years ago, and then it was defeated before the election. So with that, there's a motion in a second to have the city attorney draft language to that effect. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, the motion carries. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
And with that, there is no older unfinished business, and I do not believe there are any miscellaneous announcements. So with that, unless anyone has anything to come before the council, we're adjourned.